Keith, should I be able to hear you?
You should be able to hear me now, just unmuted.
Okay, yeah, I do now, good.
All right, looks like everyone is here, so I'm gonna say good afternoon to everyone. Welcome to our Board of Education work session. We've got a couple of items on our agenda for this afternoon. Before we get started, I just want to remind everyone, as we did the last time, to use the hands function to raise your hand, so they're not able to recognize you, if everybody remembers where that is and how to do that. Any questions before we get started? All right, we'll jump right in. First item on the agenda is a schematic design for Woods Creek Elementary, E51.
Hi, good afternoon, this is Brian Roof here with Facility Design and Construction. We are looking forward to providing the board members, Superintendent Moore, and all other participants with an update on the schematic design for E51, which is Woods Creek Elementary School. Here with me to present our project, Elizabeth Sharp and Shelley Foley. And normally, we would make these presentations as part of the Facility Committee, and the purpose of these type of presentations for schematic design would be to share the program information, information and renderings on the site, and the early design package as it exists today. We often seek recommendations at the conclusion to take the schematic design phase to the Board of Education, to seek approval to move forward with the next phase of design, which is known as the Design Development, or DD, phase. What I'd like to do is to invite Shelley to run through our presentation and the project with you, and if we could, we'll hold questions or comments and collect all those at the end. So without further ado, we will see if we can take the ball and share the presentation. All right, can everybody see the E51 Woods Creek Elementary School presentation?
Yes.
We're seeing your entire computer screen, in addition, there you go.
How's that? Okay. Thank you. Shelley, take it away for us.
Hey, thank you for your time this afternoon, and just as a reminder, Woods Creek Elementary School has a planned core capacity of 736 students. The design team is FFK Architects and includes Brad Parlow and Alicia Corwin, and site design is by CLH Design Alice Reese, and our construction manager is New Atlantic Contracting. The E51 site is planned to accommodate also a future middle school, just as a reminder, it is near the intersection of 540 and Highway 1 interchange in Holly Springs. This is our overall master plan, and you'll see the master plan as a whole on the left side of your screen. On the right side is this space specifically for the elementary school. Overall, the schematic plan is a custom design developed in response to this site and this community. The three distinct pieces of the plan, it follows the topography of the site, and the campus image is created by this elementary school that fronts the road. You'll see that it takes a bend, so that it follows the contour of that road, so follows the contour of the site. The elementary school is sited at the higher portion of the site, and that's so that when the middle school comes on board, that it will not overwhelm the smaller scale of this elementary school. We had a whole campus approach to the organization, where we wanted to definitively connect the elementary school with the middle school, look at those shared green spaces between the two, and then those play areas are interspersed around the structure and in between the two buildings. There's an easy expandability of the bus drop-off area, which enters from the north portion of the site, and the carpool drive area enters at the southeast entry to the site. As this plan is developed, we'll continue to look at buffering the play areas, and you may notice on the left side, the three to five play area also utilizes a portion of the bus loop as their hardscape play, that is also gated down at the bottom, so that during the times that the buses are not in that area, that three to five group utilizes that space. They also have a space, green space, to the north of their particular area. One of the features to note as we go through this is that there was a priority on the campus identity, being within the first phase of the elementary school. We wanted to vary those outdoor learning spaces, and you'll see those as both green spaces, as well as covered porch areas that become outdoor learning spaces. The collaborative areas, in particular, we are looking at innovating those, and moving those from previous areas where it's simply a space, to how it is specifically appropriate to each level of this adolescent development. We also have security layers that we're looking at with the structure. This is the overall main level of the plan. The entry area is to the right, and it faces the road, and is easily identifiable. That was one of the priorities when we originally started laying out how this structure would face the road. Across from the entry in the red section is the media center, which becomes part of the heart of the building. Just above that is the multipurpose room and dining area, and to the right of that, we can't see it, is the preschool and adaptive classrooms. These are located near the front entry to easily accommodate carpool and private transportation modes. The kindergarten and the first grade pod is below this, it's in the bottom right. The darker yellow spaces are the collaborative areas, and this is where we are just beginning to introduce students to the ideas and the procedures behind collaboration. These areas are more structured than they are in the other pods. To the far left is the second and third grade classrooms, these are on the same level as the rest of the structure at this point. The collaborative areas here become more accessible to the students, they're larger as the students are learning how to use these spaces effectively. In both of these areas, we have direct connections to the outdoors, visibility with glass to that, and then in the kindergarten and first grade area, we have direct access into porches, so that these become covered and open outdoor learning spaces. These three distinct structures give us some flexibility in how this is used, but also allows a lot of visibility as a security measure, but also just as how the students move through this structure in terms of wayfinding, that they are able to see through the structure and to know where they need to be. It also allows us to isolate each of these pods, for lockdown measures or for other reasons, as for community use reasons, we may want to be able to lock down each area and allow only certain areas to be used. In the second and third grade pods, you might notice some additional doors between the classrooms. This allows for increased collaboration between those classrooms and between those teachers, and is also beneficial from a security standpoint. Between the second and third grade pod and the main portion of the building is a learning stair that is a collaborative space. This is the vertical communication piece between this level and the level that sits below it. That is below, simply follows the natural grade. This is the fourth and fifth grade area. The bus loading and unloading occurs from this lower level, which is on grade. Learning stair is a, becomes a more varied collaborative space, and the remaining collaborative spaces in this area are, again, more accessible to these students, as they have practiced collaboration in their learning environments, and they have freer access to these areas as well as larger spaces. This is an overall rendering, just to give you an idea of the forms that we are looking at. We are also looking at breaking large areas of the building down into building mass that is a scale that is appropriate for these elementary students. You can see that the roof forms create sheltered spaces for outdoor learning, there are porches that are created by those, not just in the front entry, but along the kindergarten areas and the self-contained areas. The second and third grade pod also has some covered outdoor spaces for those learning places. The varied roof forms are deliberate, and they are there as not only a response to the surrounding vernacular architecture, but also as an important way to help mitigate the sound waves that come from the siren that is located on the site, the Duke Energy Siren that is there, that that roof structure would then help to break those waves, instead of it hitting large flat surfaces, that we were able to start breaking that down as a response to that siren being on site. The final slide is a rendering of that learning stair, that vertical circulation and collaboration piece between the fourth and fifth grade pod and the upper main floor level. And as we start to assess this space and use this space, we would like to follow this school, and look at how we may potentially use this type of collaboration space as our possible future stage area, instead of combining it with the gym areas as we do now. That will be something that we will just be watching as a group, that the facility planners would like to start watching. At this time, our schematic design is on budget, and that is where we would like to stay throughout that. So, at this point, we would be happy to entertain any sort of questions or comments or considerations that you might have.
Thank you, Shelley, and I would, this is Brian again, I would offer that usually in these presentations within the Facility Committee, we oftentimes have our planners, or excuse me, our architects and civil and site engineers with us, who can help answer any questions, obviously with the change in format, they're not available to answer your questions today, but if you have some that require us to go back, we're happy to do that, come back with any answers or comments. But we wanted to keep this brief and share as much information as we can in a concise fashion, and like Shelley mentioned, happy to take any questions or comments at this time.
All right, thanks, Brian. Any questions from board members at this time?
Keith, Bill Fletcher, can you share a little more about the fourth and fifth grade? This is, this is a lower level underneath two, three, and has straight egress to the outside because of the terrain, is that correct?
That is correct. We are using the natural drop-off of that elevation change to tuck this lower story there. There is some retaining wall, it's not quite as extensive as it seems to be shown at this point, as we have worked with the site and manipulated that, we've already reduced the amount of that retaining wall, but are using that natural grade change to drop and tuck that piece underneath that main level.
Well, let me, where am I? Okay, I'm on now. Let me say, I appreciate the fact that we've got a master plan that includes the middle school and the current space standards that the middle school requires, so that we can accommodate, that we know more about what we're gonna get when we build a middle school, and I won't be surprised by finding ourselves short of a couple of acres, so thank you for that.
And that was really one of our main concerns when we sat down to do that master plan, that not only did we have room for those pieces, but we wanted to create a cohesive campus plan. They gave us a guiding principle for that, and tried to make sure that we weren't simply tucking a lot of paving and parking in between those two structures, that we could actually use the facilities for both of these schools in a way that took advantage of not only the topography, but the potential for shared spaces.
Well, thank you for that.
Ms. Christian, I'll see your hand, and Dr. Martin.
Thank you, Chair Sutton, and I'm really intrigued by this new model and what we've been presented today, and I was hoping that Mr. Fletcher, at some future Facilities Committee, if we could go through some of the security changes that are in this model, I think it would be interesting for us to talk about how the openness of the plan actually is more conducive to safety and security. So I really am impressed with the schematic design that's been presented today, and would like just to have a general discussion going forward about security issues, both in this design and some of our other designs.
Great, thank you. That's becoming one of our concerns, as we wait for the security assessment, the facility planners got together and started discussing some of the ways that we could go ahead and start implementing some passive and active strategies for that, and what we look forward to is being able to integrate both the security assessment with some of our ideas from our group when that comes out.
I really appreciate it. Thank you for highlighting that in this presentation, Shelley, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christian, and Dr. Martin.
Thank you. So I appreciate your description. When I first looked at this, I was curious about the complex roof lines, and I, so I understand the reasoning for some sound dampening, but a question I have, and I like the overall layout, but a question I have is why the decision to go to sort of the multiple columns as opposed to a greater elevation, if I'm looking at this correct, really, the entire building has ground floor egress, the second floor of the, what is it, two, five, is ground floor for everything else. So I guess my question is, what is the advantage of having the K1, a separate pod, opposed to, both of the, both of the levels in the, in the other wing have ground floor egress, so could you not have done a second or third floor, depending on which you count for, that would reduce your total number of roof square inches, less foundation, I'm just curious about the cost structure, why the multiple columns opposed to going vertical?
As opposed to going vertical and all of it. Okay, so, again, the planners have looked at some of the previous structures, and one of the things that we were struck by was the overall massing of a building when a student approaches that building, and that has been one of our concerns for a while, that we wanted to make sure that as an elementary-sized student approached a building, that that massing was broken down, to where it was not intimidating to their students. That was an important priority for us. The second one was that we are building on the ridge portion of this site, which means that we're at the highest point, and what we didn't want to do was to create an additional imposing structure there that was sitting on the highest point. So the way we envisioned this site being built out with the second phase was that the top or main level portion of this piece of the school, the elementary piece, would then start to align with the upper portions of the middle school, so that neither building overwhelms the other, but at the same time, we can start to create some connections between those two buildings. So while many times it's advantageous to build directly up, in this scenario, we thought it more important to start breaking down those masses, and at the same time, create ways that we could compartmentalize between the grade levels, so that, again, we could close off certain areas or only open up particular areas. Working with the natural grade drop enabled us to not only create that lower level, but also where the buses enter from the north section of that site, that that remains on grade as well, so that we're not building up in any way for the bus loop to serve that lower level. And so that was sort of the driving factors behind that.
And I appreciate those, and that makes, that all makes really good design sense. Do you have any estimate, you know, does that add to the total cost, you know, not a whole lot different because, you know, different types of foundation for, you know, going higher, you have to have a lower of a foundation, I mean, are we about the same cost, or does, what does it do to the cost structure?
Yes, right now, we are within budget, which tells us that pretty much our structural systems at this point, especially as we are looking at that roof and how we're able to manipulate the different types of roof trusses and joists there, as opposed to using a lot of steel and lightweight concrete, that we're able to keep this rain.
And Dr. Martin, this is Brian Roof here. One of the challenges with this particular program and project, given the site and, you know, the fact that this particular elementary school is on the ridge at the peak, and it rounds that turn, it really drove us to a custom aspect for this particular school in a way that didn't dominate then over top of the entire campus or the middle school. But again, when we set the cost model, and we do so from cost per square foot, cost per, I would applaud our planner, Shelley, and Elizabeth, and our architects, because they had to work within the same boundaries or constraints from a budgetary standpoint, to ensure that if we went to more horizontal type of application compared to a vertical, that it still had to be delivered within budget. So I think the team has worked really hard to make sure that this, this type of application going more horizontal did not provide a challenge or a problem as it relates to the budget. Like I said, I'm very happy and pleased for this particular project to be able to...
I really do appreciate that, Elizabeth.
Certainly, and I would, you know, I would just want to emphasize the fact that it's schematic design for this particular project, we are at this point, which is a good place to be.
Yeah, no, and I really appreciate that, and, you know, I really applaud thoughtful design going into that. Thoughtful design doesn't always add cost, but it can add a huge benefit, so thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, my happy.
Hi, you know, I echo a lot of gym sentiments, you know, what is the cost we're having with the, with the design, you know, we have the schematic here, but we don't really see any monetary value attached to this design. Certainly, the sound dampening with the sirens... Certainly, the sound dampening with the siren being right there. You know, I live down the road from one and it's not quiet when it's not intended to be quiet. But with new things that are coming, with the learning common or the learning stair, what, I mean, is there just not a space for traditional commons that we're looking into potentially making it something more as we move into it? I guess my biggest concern is looking at the cost, you know, and how much is because of the unique topography of this site and how much is, is, you know, doing, trying something new like a learning stair?
Brian, are you all there?
Mr. Sutton, can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, responding back to the, to the question about budget and design, from a high-level perspective, this particular school budget was set similar to, to other elementary schools. And then, the architects and engineers and our planners, given that creative opportunity and freedom to work with the site and the complexities, being mindful of the budget. So, I don't think any of the decisions or the design elements that you see today are the result or necessity of needs to control cost. They're a blend of opportunity that is, is being met within the budget structure. And then, I'll let Shelley speak a little bit about some of the opportunities with features that they're looking to explore, whether it's the stair, the learning stair, or other, other features.
Sure. So, just to be clear, all of the learning commons areas that are currently in the program or the space standards are included in this. And so, we simply took a different approach as to innovating those commons and learning areas. And so, we're looking at them as to how we can change them in response to each developmental stage. So, again, as I explained, in the lower grades, they're a little bit more controlled, they're slightly smaller, but they're more broken up. But we still have the correct amount of square footage for this. As you move up in the grade levels, those commons take on a different type of atmosphere. They become more accessible to the students in terms of being right outside of their classrooms and they're less controlled by the teachers, although completely supervised by the teachers. But what it means is that the students have more of an accessible way to reach those areas and more direct, where they can move more freely in and out of the commons areas. And then, into the fifth grade area, they are able to not only use their own commons areas, but also that learning stairs. So, that becomes part of their space that they are also able to use. That stair is a vertical circulation piece that would need to be there, just in terms of the circulation within the school. But we saw that as an opportunity to make it more than just a regular stair for a vertical communication. We saw it as a way to create a space that was completely used by the students and hopefully used in different ways. That it could become a performance area, it could become a group area, small group area, or a large group area, and hopefully would become an area where you could pull an entire grade together in one space for something that maybe the teachers would want to do collaboratively. That space also opens to the outside directly so that that space can spill out into an outside learning environment. And we just saw all of those as opportunities to be able to create a more enriched space for those students.
So, thank you for that clarification. You had mentioned egress as far as getting out of the building if there were a fire drill and a grade level or a class was using that learning staircase. What would egress look like? I'm assuming that's not the only stair on that wing.
Right, that is correct. In fact, we would call that a convenient stair. And so, within the upper level, there's exit stairs out of the left side, but they also have on-grade access just to the right of that learning stair. They are able to exit to the exterior from there. So, they have actually on-grade access as well as lower level access to egress that point.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think that takes care of all the questions for Brian and the team. Also, Brian and Shelley, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is the update on the COVID-19 response. I'll turn it over to our Superintendent Kathy Moore. And Shelley will introduce the leadership team and we'll get started with our update.
I'll just start by indicating that we continue to work through our responses in a variety of areas of responsibility for the district. And our team today is going to bring you updates on some of the primary duties that we've been working on and particularly with remote learning and device access and our food security. And we'll have time for some board comments as a part of this as well. So, I'm going to turn it over to Edward.
Thank you, Superintendent Moore. Good afternoon, Chair Sutton and members of the board. Just as a matter of process, there are four presentations, small presentations here this afternoon. And the series of the presentations, what we're going to do is just go through each one and then if you'll hold your questions to the end, each presentation will be shorter than a long, a long, an hour. Mine will be about 15 to 20 minutes and then the others will be a little bit less in length. It's good to be here with you this afternoon. So, if we go to Slide 3, which is Remote Learning Overview, the purpose, obviously, that we know of remote learning is to provide continuous learning for each of our students. And it's important to note, this is not a brick and mortar environment, but a home environment, learning in an environment that can be digital and analog. Remote learning is not the same as face-to-face learning in a traditional school setting. It can occur using multimedia such as text, video, virtual field trips, even the U.S. postal system and telephone. In the traditional school semester, we know there are students who choose remote learning opportunities because it works for them. What we are facing now is really an imposed distance learning environment for all students because of the COVID-19 pandemic. And although we as a collective community did not choose this learning platform, we are going to give it our very best. And we know that every student is still expected to learn, grow, and succeed and using maximum flexibility. That's really important for our students, our teachers, parents, and all of our families. A couple of critical factors that we consider is we want to work towards being accessible by all students for which the learning is intended. And we also want to consider the whole child as well as the home learning environment. And we'll continue providing support to principals, teachers, and staff that's essential for all students in this new normal. But our overall focus remains and has been from the beginning on connecting with all of our students and families, providing some sort of semblance of normalcy while also providing continuous learning. There have been many people working on this remote learning plan, close to 80 individuals, including teachers and principals. And really, it's been divided into five collaborative teams, Technology, Content Development, Communications and Logistics, Professional Learning, and Family and Community Support. The remote learning team has reviewed best practices we've met, we have been remaining in contact with other local districts. We have considered many scenarios and have tried to really create a framework or a structure that can support students with or without devices and the internet, but most importantly, as previously mentioned, a framework that will provide flexibility to schools and support our school families and faculties, both as teaching professionals and individuals at home, understanding that they too are trying to care for their families. And that the learning for our students' families can also be difficult with parents trying to manage work and home through this COVID-19 pandemic. The remote learning timeline is really a broad overview of our district timeline. While building the learning resources site in Phase 1, over the past few weeks, teachers have laid the groundwork for the launch of the full remote learning by connecting with students, engaging both personally and academically, really prepping and preparing for a full launch. And centrally, with the help of teaching staff, content was added to the learning resources site. General learning packets have been created to distribute through targeted mailing and delivery. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a later slide. And also during this time, there was ongoing professional learning with the staff around distance learning and best teaching practices like Google Classroom, Seesaw, Google Meet, Canvas, and resources from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. I will say, though, it's really important to note that there is no single one-size-fits-all district-required approach. Teachers have always been and remain in the best position to assess student learning needs. They make plans to meet those needs, deliver instructional material and practices that are intended to address the specific classroom and the specific group of students inside that classroom. During Phase 2, we continued working on the remote learning framework and infrastructure but in addition to meet the needs of students who do not yet have access to internet or devices. One option that we explored was to take advantage of the educational programming through UNC-TV and North Carolina Department of Public Instruction partnership. This program is being offered to help districts keep students engaged during the pandemic, especially if they lack internet access. As you know, we launched early college and modified schools on April the 6th, and this week, we launched to all schools. We're still working with principals to distribute, to distribute printed instructional materials for students that have been difficult to locate. The Communications and Logistics Team is working with our Wake County Council and Student Support Services and our Communications Department to implement additional strategies to locate students and families for whom we have concerns and or have not yet connected. We do plan to do intentional mailing to all known addresses for students that are not yet connected at the school, and we're also seeking permanent contact information. We're working to capture the names of students not in attendance in the remote learning environment, either digitally, via the internet, email, text, or telephone, and school councils and social workers and other staff at the school are in the best position to locate missing students, update power schools, and as I said, targeting mailing general learning packets to the students that are missing. One of the anecdotes that I'll share at the end is that our schools who began remote learning last week have made connections with a lot of their kids, but some still have not logged on or, you know, have logged on and not completed assignments and that sort of thing. So, as we start to get into this remote learning, there will always be work to do. The next slide really is just a more detailed slide about Phase 1 and Phase 2. It just allows members to access more specific information. The pink text is a link to either a learning resource site or a document providing more depth and detail. I'll just give an overview. But again, Phase 1 was about the construction of the remote learning site. I'm not going to go into that because we talked about it at the last board meeting, but it does provide much information and links to learning resources, technology support for families, social emotional support for students, and professional learning and resources for our staff. In Phase 2, the district has worked to communicate what we expect with remote learning, how to set up a home environment, connecting with your child's teachers, again, our teachers and staff reaching out to students and families, providing norms for online learning, additional support, and also flexibility. The format is similar to a flipped classroom. Teachers do prerecorded lessons, assignments, readings, maybe virtual field trips, all of this prior to connecting with the class and teacher. Then, in the face-to-face or call-in learning is used for reflection, review, dialogue, answering questions. Really, this is the time that they work to solidify learning and understanding from the assigned pre-class materials. Flexible scheduling is used to allow learning anytime. That's why we have flex spaces built into the schedule, office hours, flexibility for teachers, students, parents to meet, you know, outside of a daily schedule and to try to make it work in the home. And I'll give a little bit more information about that in just a moment. Again, there is the PBS-UNC partnership, and the plan is to use this partnership with targeted school messenger, meaning that we want to communicate with families. We send viewing guides to support teachers and students and families weekly. And then, we can use school messenger to target specific grade levels and our subjects as a reminder to watch specific content. And we can also provide verbal learning and support for parents by reminding them what they can do before, during, or after viewing programming. With regard to the instructional packets, we are providing that as an additional supplemental resource when digital access and other measures, including the UNC initiative, have not been successful. As referenced earlier, we are really working to capture the names of all students and make sure we can connect. And we're also targeting mailing the instructional paper packets. The next slide is really just a sample schedule, and this kind of gives you an idea of what it looks like. As I said, flexibility is built into the schedule. Looks a little bit different for elementary and middle, but the timeframe is basically the same. Instruction is prerecorded for individual learning and it's available at any time. That's one of the beauties of remote learning and distance learning is that students can log in when it's accessible for them at home to do the learning. And that's how we generally present information in the flipped classroom. But the real-time or live opportunities for continued learning is where we're asking the students to interact, dialogue, it's where concepts are modeled by the teacher. There may be small group discussion, individual work, teachers and students interact here. And really, they just dive into the concepts presented in the prerecorded classroom. It's important to note, the live learning sessions are generally, generally not recorded to protect student privacy. And schools can organize their face-to-face learning opportunities generally between 8:30 and 11:00. Guidelines include, you know, we've asked the individual class sessions not to exceed two per day, that individual class session should not be longer than an hour to conform with best practices with online learning. But it is our expectation that students have at least five hours of contact per week per course. So, that could be two hours of live or real-time opportunities and then three hours of prerecorded, self-exploration, the assigned activities, and then of course, readings and homework or other posted options. As I said earlier, this may look a little bit different for different courses and age groups depending on the content and the need of the students. But again, we do allow it to be flexible depending on the content. And as I said earlier, there's not a single one-size-fits-all. We've provided this general structure for a schedule, but teachers within the same subject, maybe even within the same school, may approach the same learning objective very differently. And we want to, that's okay. Teachers are in the best position to assess student learning needs, make plans to meet those needs, and then deliver the instructional material and practices to. those needs, and then deliver the instructional material and practices to address the specific students that they teach. All schedules do provide time for students to be served by special education, and the schedules also include opportunities to provide support for intervention and acceleration based on whatever the student need, and thus we have the flex time and office hours built in. We know that the courses are being co-planned with PLTs and other relevant instructional staff, and accommodations and modifications are also being considered when they work the plan. But as we said, we try to be flexible in that teachers can meet with one-on-one, small group during staff office hours. It's flexible on Fridays, but I also know that staff have worked with students into the evening in a time that might be conducive with the family and individual students. The next slide is just really to share some of the communication. We know that good communication is always important, and during uncertain times like this, the need for clear and concise communication I know is essential. We always strive to over-communicate. We would like for someone to say, "You're sending us too much information," and then we know we've met our goal. But daily email updates and guidance are sent to principals, and we schedule weekly webinars to provide professional learning and specific remote learning information for them. There is a question-and-answer system that's been developed. Various suits and members of the central services staff are working to track and respond to questions really quickly. And as we transition from building the infrastructure, we must also provide excellent customer service to our schools and our families to support this remote learning. Weekly emails and guidance for teachers are provided. Wake Connect is kept current with updated information, their regular check-ins, also with outside partners such as Kristin Veller and NCAE. Our parents are also receiving weekly information emails with links to Wake Connect, Remote Learning Resources site, and we still use and respond our Let's Talk platform and the school messenger. And then, of course, we know Board Chair Keith Sutton and Superintendent Moore have been doing their weekly press briefs. And so our last slide here, just a couple of words about adapting. We've got to explore this new normal in order for students to thrive, and we have to continue to learn and adjust. We know that as a staff, we have to monitor and ensure that student growth is occurring. We have to check in often with principals, teachers, our students, and parents, and we have to think through both our short and long-term plans. The bottom line is, we really have to be nimble and continue to adjust. And part of that adjustment means we have to accelerate the remote learning experience. We're going to get better at this. We have to apply what we've learned initially to innovate and influence our professional learning opportunities, scheduling, teaching practices, the equitable access to learning and resources. We've got to grow in how we can serve students and support teachers, and over time, as I said, we're going to get better. Just a couple anecdotes, and then I'll wrap up from schools. Modified and early colleges started last week with full remote learning, and overall, some celebrations. Schools worked diligently to create positive virtual learning environments for students. The parents were extremely positive and pleased with Week One. It is clear that students want to connect, they want to be seen and interact, and part of their first-week success, I think, can be attributed to frequent check-ins with the staff, a constant reminder to go slowly, do small, digestible, and doable increments for both our faculties and our families. Teachers are finding new strategies to engage students in distance learning, using new teaching practices and really pushing to that next level. There's been increased communication. Some schools even held virtual parent information sessions to help explain remote learning with parents, to help encourage better teacher-parent relationships. It is clear that students, parents, and staff, they are excited to be back in school. Some of the challenges is parents can feel overwhelmed in how to support their children at home, because we know that they're still trying to work in many cases, and there's lots of things going on with the economy and with this pandemic that we can't see into every home, and we know there are other issues other than just learning. There is concern about continued student participation, being able to reach all students, making sure that they can complete the activities and connect, especially as we go into maybe a longer period of eight or nine weeks of remote learning. And as I said, schools have made connections with most of their students, but participation in class meetings does not always mimic the same level of connection with students, and so we've got to continue working on that. And then for additional support, there are questions about how to evaluate and grade, and I know you've got some questions about that, and we'll provide some more information a little bit later. But we're focused on engagement right now more than evaluation. As I said, we're trying to make sure that we connect with students. Pacing guides have been provided to teachers to determine what the essential learning can or should look like and be covered, and principals and teachers are seeking blocks of time to meet with staff and departments outside of the teaching. So I'll just close with, overall, there's still work to do. We're pleased with the results from our first week of remote learning, and today we are in Day Two of the full launch across the district. So with that out the end, and I'll open it up if there are any questions.
I don't see any hands raised at this point, Dr. Martin.
Yes, not so much a question as a comment. Thank you for the work that you've done. This is definitely challenging work, and I appreciate the summary that you've given. I just want to reinforce, because I've heard this some from families, the point that you made, which I think is really important, that just like regular school, whatever that is, is not exactly the same classroom-to-classroom, school-to-school. We have no reason to expect, nor should we expect, everybody's experience to be the same across the county. Everybody is used to, whether it's social media or email, we're doing a lot electronically right now, so there's a lot of comparison. My kid's doing this, your kid's doing that. Why are they different? I think you highlighted it, I just want to reinforce, why are they different? It's because every classroom is different, every teacher is different, and education is that of how the teacher engages and inspires each child. So I appreciate that everybody is working hard, but that work is going to look different in multiple settings. So again, thanks for the work that's being done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Ms. Scott.
Thank you. I also want to express my gratitude for all of the work that has been taking place. My own children started their remote learning yesterday, and it's been a learning curve, but it's just been so apparent how much work has been poured into these plans, seeing principals leading their school population, including their employees and their students, and that's been incredible. So I want to express my gratitude for that. One of the questions I have, though, is if we have a percentage, or if we know if principals are sharing how many students they have not been able to contact at all. I know that other school systems that have also used remote learning, they have reported that one of the downsides is that they are not reaching all of their students, and there are some they have not been able to contact. And I was just wondering if we're tracking or keeping track of that data to help also plan for should remote learning be something we need to use again in the future after this pandemic is no longer impacting us in that way.
So thank you, Ms. Scott. Yes, we are tracking that data. We really wanted to go a week last week and then into this first week to sort of see where the numbers start to settle out, but I can just tell you, generally, a couple of our high schools that have opened see somewhere around 75% to 85% of their students they have connected with, but as far as logging on or calling in, the number then ranges somewhere around the 60% to 75%. But we also have elementary schools that have reached every student or are missing as few as two or three. We know some of our academies have reached 100% of families, and in some cases, 100% have logged in. So we know it's going to vary, but I would say generally, at this point, we're about at high schools have had about an 85% contact rate, academies are 95% or so, and then elementary schools have ranged from 80% to 95% contact rate. And we're going to continue to monitor that now that we have the whole district doing the remote learning, and particularly the connective rate. And our expectation, this is Wake County, and we have really high expectations, we are going to give our very best effort to reach all of our students.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Ms. Mahappy.
Thank you. Dr. McFarland, similarly, following up to Ms. Scott's question, what is the level of engagement and/or help that we are able to give our families whose primary language is not English, as far as information from device rollouts to helping their students with homework in an environment where the primary language is English?
Well, we continue to work on that. All of the information that we have sent or posted to our Wake Learning, the Resources site, we have translated into Spanish. And we have talked about the possibility of some interpreters doing some support with online learning, but we are obviously working to make that connection stronger.
Ms. Mahappy to answer your question.
We're working on it. It is something that I think we are all doing these days, so I appreciate that, and I look forward to seeing what those are as we move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Fletcher.
Couple of questions. Dr. McFarland, the sample schedules, we have schools starting at different times because of our bus system and providing three tiers of transportation options. Are we expecting that schools follow the bus tier bell schedules, or are they free to roam?
They do have a little bit more freedom since we are not planning the three-tier bell schedule. Schools are generally starting around the 8 o'clock, well, like elementary, they generally are starting around the 8, 8:30 time, but there is some variance. But yes, principals and learning communities do have the option to make some choices, again, depending on the needs of families and their community.
Thank you. I want to appreciate the structure of the days and the availability of staff in unstructured times to meet the needs of various students. We've got some high school students who were not passing on March 13, courses necessary for graduation. This schedule seems to give the flexibility for those students to be recovered, for their coursework to be called up, and for them to achieve what's necessary to cross the graduation stage, be it virtual or physical. And I still have many days in June marked out on my calendar for the physical graduations. One thing about, and I'll just say, I agree with our colleagues who are expressing appreciation for everything that you and the other folks in your team and all of our staff have done. I marvel at how teachers have reached out. I'm aware of many, many schools that have done home visits, if you will, that have intentionally contacted every student, have haven't given up. If they couldn't get them on the phone, they have made an effort to reach them in person, giving social distancing homage. And in spite of that, and in spite of the fact that communication has been established and that the technology tools have been put in their hands, some 20 to 35 kids per school have not yet logged on. And so we have a communication challenge that goes beyond providing the device and beyond the one-sided communication from the school. I'm aware of a couple of high schools where they thought they had enough devices, and after school opened yesterday, more people raised their hand and said, "Oh, I didn't read that email." We need everybody to pay attention to what's going on as part of this effort to get us into a remote learning mode for all of our students and faculty. And I particularly want to give appreciation to teachers who were never taught how to do this and have worked together with their colleagues, with some professional development from the district, to tackle and learn how to be effective hugging children through a wire or over the air and engaging their young minds in instructive and quality learning. And I know it'll get better as we go forward, but I just want to say right now, thank you to those teachers for the effort that they're making to make their classrooms engaging, interesting, and for young people to want to be there, not have somebody making them be there. I think that's fantastic.
Thank you for those comments. And I will say, I was speaking with a teacher earlier today, and he was telling me that he held two classes this morning, but during the office hours in the afternoon, three students logged into the afternoon session because they were unable in the morning because of either something else they were doing, or in one case, it's siblings were working in their classes, and so they were able to still get their learning during the office hour in the day. And that's really the key to the flexible schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Johnson-Hoffler.
Dr. McFarland, hopefully, a quick question. Have we started across the district yet instituting or working with our students who have IEPs?
Yes, we have done that. As I said during our presentation, they've been doing IEP meetings. Accommodations and modifications are also being considered. When doing the face-to-face learning, it can be extended time, maybe half of the activity is assigned, a one-to-one session with the general ed teacher during, or the specialized teacher during office hours or flex time. And I know Karen Hamilton and her team are working diligently to make sure within the scope of this environment that special education continues in proportion to the continuous learning that we are providing all general ed students.
Thank you. Can you, I mean, I'm sure there's a list of things you'll keep us posted on, but definitely, if you can add this to your list for our next board meeting as well, to kind of give us an update of how that's going and how it's being received by students and their families. Definitely, of course, I'm sure you all considered this, but back to Ms. Mahappy's point, and this did come up on another call, I was all with some folks is to ensure that folks with language access concerns also, that we're taking that into consideration as we're planning these IEPs.
Thank you, and we'll certainly do that.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson-Hoffler. Thank you. Ms. Johnson-Hossler has answered your question.
It does. Thank you.
Okay. I see Mr. Cook is up next.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hope that you can hear me okay and that everybody's doing well.
Yes, just fine.
Great. So the, the intent for the next segment of the presentation is to provide a brief overview of the parameters that have been developed for grading and feedback practices within the new remote learning environment. The overview will provide a recap of applicable state board guidance received to date, along, of course, with some district-level practices and expectations. As I think we anticipated, we have received quite a bit of feedback over the past week or so. So we'll do our best to address some of the most common questions that we know about and that are still out there, at least to the degree possible, given the information and state-level guidance that is currently available. Ultimately, I think as Dr. McFarland made clear, I think in his comments, we are committed to finding the very best solutions to meet the needs of all of our students, which of course is no small task, given the current circumstances. So if we go to the next slide here, State Board of Education and DPI guidance. Dr. McFarland already referenced some of the main ideas from this guidance, and by this point, I believe most board members are probably at least somewhat familiar with what has been provided by the state. First, in a memo released on March the twenty-seventh, and then in a subsequent update released the next week on April the second. That said, I do think it's appropriate for us to continue to recognize some of the most significant guiding principles that are spelled out in the guidance. Not the least of which is that it's important for us to continuously acknowledge the unprecedented conditions that students are learning in, which of course, I think makes it clear that we must focus on engagement more than evaluation. From a grading perspective, put simply, I think ultimately any grading or feedback plan in a remote learning environment by nature has to reflect the reality of where we are. So it should be expected that the way that we grade and evaluate or hold students accountable for what they learn or don't learn, do or don't do, should and has to reflect this new and uncertain reality, at least through May the fifteenth per state board guidance. So again, Dr. McFarland, as Dr. McFarland indicated, the state board guidance lays out these five critical factors that should be considered when designing and implementing an effective district-level remote learning platform. These five factors are specifically referenced in the guidelines and the parameters that should be followed in the development of district plans for grading and feedback practices. So if we go to the next slide and we start first with seniors, where the most explicit state guidance has been provided. There, though, there are still some questions about exactly what is expected for our seniors in terms of finishing out the year, so we'll do our best to, to address that here. At this point, what we do know is that first, a senior passing on March the thirteenth will receive a pass, as indicated by a PC nineteen code in Power School for the course. And secondly, final grades will not be issued immediately as we are still encouraging seniors to continue to engage in remote learning through the duration of the semester. We do believe, and as is referenced in the state board guidance, there's great benefit to seniors maintaining a connection to their classmates for social and emotional reasons, in addition to the obvious academic considerations. That said, I think we do also recognize and expect challenges associated with keeping seniors engaged for the remainder of the semester. It is important to note, and I think as Mr. Fletcher pointed out, if a senior or any other student is failing a course as of March the thirteenth, they will continue to be afforded opportunities to pull up their average to above the passing mark in the coming weeks so that they can remain on track to graduate as planned this year. If we go now to grades K five, the situation for K eleven students is a little murky at this time. Some key final decisions have not yet been made at the state level and ultimately will obviously hinge on the decision as to whether or not to reopen after May the fifteenth. What we do know is that state guidance makes clear that several key considerations should be made when making local decisions on grading and feedback structures through May the fifteenth. I'll just kind of share and walk through several of those considerations. First of all, for grades K through five, again, this relates to the guidance from the state. We know that if the five critical factors are met for remote learning, districts may evaluate student learning in the format the school already uses for grades K through five. Further, the state guidance stipulates that LEAs and charters will focus on supporting student progress and communicating feedback to students and families rather than on assigning grades. For grades six through eleven, it's generally the same. Again, if the critical factors are met for remote learning, districts may assign grades in the format the school already uses for grades six through eleven to evaluate progress. I think one important stipulation here is the phrase that says, if the five critical factors are not met, student grades will not be negatively impacted and feedback is still expected. So I think as is likely to be the case with many other districts across the state, we've made the determination that because all of those critical factors cannot be met at this time, and in particular in regards to accessibility by all students and consistent communication, it is necessary to adjust the manner in which grading and feedback is provided when compared to what normal circumstances might be. Again, at least through May the fifteenth. It's also worth noting that the guidance states that in the event that North Carolina public schools do not reopen for face-to-face learning after May the fifteenth, additional statewide guidance for final grading to ensure equitable treatment for all students will be provided by the State Board of Education. And so, again, because a decision has not yet been made about whether or not schools remain open after the fifteenth, likewise, final decisions and guidance has not been provided by the state regarding grading and feedback practices. So what does this mean in Wake right now? First of all, for third quarter, students will earn a P for pass or an I for incomplete for third-quarter courses based on performance through March the thirteenth. At present, it's important that we point out this is simply an indication of where the student is in their current coursework. All schools that did not complete, for all schools that did not conclude the third quarter, which is most of our, our schools, we are not posting a final quarter grade for quarter three at this point. The pass or the incomplete is a placeholder for a grade that cannot be accurately determined at this point since we closed abruptly in March. And of course, there are lots of students that, like our seniors, did not have opportunities to complete assignments and finish coursework. And so we want to be sure that we provide those ample opportunities in the coming days and weeks as we move forward. For the fourth quarter, and again, at this point, we're only referencing through May the fifteenth as aligned with state guidance. Our teachers will be focusing on, as Dr., as Dr. McFarland indicated, providing feedback and communication of progress to students and families, not necessarily the traditional letter grade or numerical grade, but also providing maximum flexibility, particularly with many students still facing challenges and barriers and connecting online. Teachers also are focusing on facilitating student understanding. And meanwhile, will of course be recording student learning and progress to the best of their ability in these coming weeks through the fifteenth of May. Beyond May the fifteenth, I think the, the best phrase here to, to, to say is to be determined. Again, to be clear, final decisions have not yet been made. Whatever the Wake County Public School System does as a district will be based not only on state-level guidance and direction, but will also be in response to the current realities at that time. And the last, if the last few weeks, I think, have taught us anything, it's that our situation, as we know, changes almost daily. I will mention that one of the most significant questions that we know people have, and rightfully so, is what will happen with final grades and transcripts for non-seniors? And will districts, including Wake County, go to a pass fail or pass fail incomplete scale at the end of the year? The response is quite simply, that has not been determined and will, of course, require some state-level direction. Another related question that we're also aware of that's out there is the question about whether or not students could have the option to choose between having a traditional numeric grade count or have a pass or incomplete posted, essentially being able to choose between one of those two different grading scales. I think it's fair to say that at this point, nothing has been ruled out. And we, of course, have to acknowledge and do and appreciate that students are and have been working really hard to post strong grades and rigorous content across all levels of coursework. We do believe that we should honor those efforts appropriately, just as we also believe that we must work to honor students whose circumstances make it impossible to give complete focus or attention to their schoolwork during these unprecedented circumstances. So we will continue to explore all possible options and will ultimately make a decision, again, based on guidance from the state and evolving circumstances as they develop. And so just in closing, just to reiterate, I think, some of the other comments from Mr. Fletcher, Dr. McFarland, and others, I'd be remiss if I didn't say again, kudos and a sincere thank you to our ten thousand-plus teachers across the district who, as hard as our district staff and our administrators work to provide some guidelines and parameters and supports, ultimately, we know and recognize that it's our teachers who every day are figuring out how to make this happen for kids and families. So absolutely the best that you could ever hope to work with. And so with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have about grading or feedback at this time.
I've got, I've got several hands, and we've got two more presentations to get through that are fairly brief. Let me just hold those questions, and let's get to the technology update and the food nutrition update, and then we'll entertain questions. So next up is our Chief Technology Officer, Marla Gads.
Good afternoon, all. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. All right. So today, I'm just going to give you a few updates around our staff device distribution, our student device distribution, internet connectivity of our students, and some technology supports we've put in place. So first all, first of all, in January, we began our brand-new device distribution for our staff. From January to March, we had finished at about half of our schools. But as you know, on March thirteenth, that left about half of our school staff without new devices. And many of the devices they had were five to six years old at the time. So we worked, our technology services team worked extremely hard between March twenty-third and April second, and we were able to distribute four thousand six hundred and ninety-nine laptops in about nine days, all while keeping our social distancing in place as we went through. So now, and we've gotten some great feedback from our staff that now have those devices. And so we're really pleased in the fact that it's helping them during this time. Our next step for staff device distribution, we do still have some school staff and our central services staff who do not have devices. So as soon as our, our delivery for our central services staff gets in, we'll begin distributing that to our central service departments. And we are already providing opportunities for the remaining school staff to receive their devices. At the same time, we began working on our student device distribution. We pulled together a great cross-functional collaborative team that has been working on how to meet student needs while also trying to keep everybody safe and healthy. So as you can see, there's a good number of technology services folks from all of our departments. But we also have a fantastic partnership with our area superintendents, our facilities department, transportation, health services, and counseling and support services. So this team has put a lot of time and effort trying to make this as smooth as possible. So in the beginning, and even currently now, our district team has been working with the inventory that we currently have. So as we started to look at the devices that we had in schools, which we have a good inventory of, we realized that there were some things that would need to be done before schools could begin to check out. One of those things is all of our schools have carts in classrooms. And so in order for students to be able to check out the Chromebooks, they had to, all the devices had to be removed from the carts, and all the wiring of the power cables in the backs of the carts had to be taken out and worked through, and devices needed to be wiped down and cleaned. On the backside of that, our schools helped us with that, and they did the preparing of those devices. While they were doing that, our inventory team went into our inventory system, had to remove all the devices from all the carts in the inventory, and then had to shift, they have to go in the inventory system and shift the inventory to different schools as needed. At the same time, as we're starting to figure out who needs to have what inventory, we're picking up devices from one school and working to provide them for another school. But before we do that, we pick them up, we bring them in. ADT has been working with us, our contractors with our Chromebooks, has been working with us to make sure that they're in working condition. Nothing would be worse than handing a device over to a student and it not working. So we're having those, they're coming in, we're checking, we're repairing devices that need it, and then we're taking them back out to, and distributing those to schools that need them. Our transportation department has been fantastic, as well as ADT, in making sure that those connections and those devices are moving between schools. At the same time, our schools, as I mentioned, were preparing devices. They began contacting families to see what the school needs were, whether or not they needed a device, or the internet, or both. And so they were able to access a good number of our families. And as Mr. Fletcher mentioned, we are getting new needs every day from our schools, and we're working through those as, as that comes around. One of the things that we did provide is a guide for distribution to our schools. In working with our health services team and others, we wanted to make sure that as schools were rolling these devices out to students, that we were keeping everyone safe and healthy. And so I've put a, a version of the guide. We took out some of the links as far as things that went directly to school data, but all the other information is there for you to see what our district team developed for school guidance. And then they are the ones going out, they've been doing a fantastic job. So kudos to our principals, our area superintendents, and our teachers who are working at the schools, trying to make sure all of our students have devices. The bigger challenge of this has been providing internet connectivity to our students at home. As we know that there are quite a few families that don't have any access to the internet within their home or, or access even within their, their area, their neighborhoods. So the initial data originally showed us that approximately ten thousand families did not have internet connectivity at home. We worked with a variety of our cellular companies, trying to find solutions. And ultimately, we ended up ordering about ten thousand five hundred hotspots, which are simply a little rectangle box that actually gives out a cell signal. So it provides data in order for our Chromebooks to connect and provide access for our students. They have been coming in this week, so we've already had approximately sixteen hundred of those come in, and we'll expect the rest of them by the end of this week. At the same time, it's going to take us a little while to get those all configured. AT&amp;T is going to help us, but it's going to take a lot more people to help do that in order for us to roll these out as fast as possible and as safe as possible. Activate Good has been a fantastic partner, and they've been helping with our volunteers. And I'm proud to say that thanks to the folks at Activate Good, we actually have a full schedule of volunteers for all the days from Thursday of this week to Tuesday of next week. And so we're really thankful for, for their work and for all the members of the community, both school system employees and community members who are pitching in to help us with this process. The last thing I want to mention to you is that, as a parent myself, I will tell you, having a child at home with, that is going through remote learning, I find myself as support technician to him on a regular basis, as I'm sure a lot of our families are feeling as well. So when things don't work, it's a little frustrating. And so we didn't want to hand out devices or internet without providing some help and a lifeline when things don't work well. So we have created a remote learning help desk. It can be accessed twenty-four-seven through the online system, and the, the address is just studenttechhelp.w It can be accessed 24/7 through the online system, and the address is just studenttechhelp.wcpss.net. They can also, on weekdays between 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., you can call the remote learning help desk and get direct help. We do have Spanish-speaking staff available to help those who are, may speak another language, and we will also continue to see if there are other interpreters we need to bring in to help that as well. So with that, I assume we'll hold my questions as well, and I will pass this on to Dr. Paul Co.
Greetings, everyone, board members. I'm going to try to speed through our updates around food security. So I wanted to first start off by saying, in addition to all the work that our school-based staff, principals, teachers are doing, say a huge thanks to the heroic work of our Child Nutrition Services and Transportation staff for going out to provide meals to our families during this unprecedented context, in addition to the partners that we've been working with. On this slide, you'll see that our food efforts have been truly collaborative with both WCPSs sites that are based on school sites and also our Big Bus Food Truck locations, and also in partnership with Wake County and our NC State Cooperative Extension, where they're picking up meals by Wake County Public School System and distributing at around 68 locations. And these sites will continue to evolve and expand, and we're trying to use this effort to meet the evolving needs of our students and families. Also, in the western region of our county, we've coordinated with Boston Market and Kirk of Kildare to distribute at 13 locations, and also, we've been in partnership through Interfaith Food Shuttle and the Food Bank of Central and Eastern North Carolina to distribute approximately 1,160 boxes per week to our highest-demand sites to supplement food security for our families during the weekend. And if you go to the next slide, these statistics will show you the amount of meals that we've distributed as Wake County Public Schools between March 17th and April 10th, and we're roughly at around 338,000 meals, and about 30,000 meals have been distributed through our Big Bus Food Trucks. Our western-region sites have distributed approximately 19,000 meals from March 17th through April 3rd. We distributed about 4,650 boxes from March, each Friday from March 20 to April 10th. And so, as research shows, that many children who do not have enough to eat wind up with the miscapacity to understand and learn, we understand the importance of getting food towards students and families in need, so that they're able to both cope and learn through this unprecedented context. We're going to continue working together and do all we can to help make sure the county is more and more food-secure during this time. I'm going to pass it back to Mr. Sutton, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Co. So I'll start with one member's questions. Mr. Hagerty.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sutton. I had some questions for Mr. Cook. I really appreciate all of his explanations regarding the grading policy, and I know that right now, you know, it's been explained that evaluation is not the primary concern as much as it is developing the content material and making sure we can get it out into everyone's One of the most frequent questions that I get is about grading, however, and I think you've explained, if I understood you correctly, that a lot of the decisions about grading are governed by DPI and the North Carolina State Board of Education, and a lot of what we will ultimately do will be decided, you know, by them. And right now, because we don't know if schools will be reopened on May 15th, we may all have our prediction, but because we don't know, we're waiting for that additional guidance to know what we can and we can't do. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hagerty. I think in general terms, certainly, just based on their own guidance they've already provided, you know, it's pretty clear that we should not jump ahead beyond May the 15th at this point to begin making final determinations and plans unless we want to have to go back and change those depending on additional guidance and information from the state after that point in time. I do think, as the board well knows, that sometimes state guidance could be very explicit and direct. For example, Mr. Hagerty, I think even in the circumstance that we have right now, we're seniors, and how we're being asked to grade seniors and evaluate seniors is pretty explicit in the guidance. And so that ship has sailed, so to speak, from a standpoint of how much latitude districts might have in determining what to do with their seniors. A little less explicit, at least through May the 15th, is what districts might choose to do in regards to grading and evaluating non-seniors. And so, based on that information, we, of course, use the guidance that is available, which seems to stipulate pretty clearly that we need to consider those five critical factors. And if there are, if we're not certain about the status of those five factors, for example, in being able to reach all students, ensure accessibility for all students, ensure open lines of communication for all families on a consistent basis, then it's pretty clear that we've got to make some adjustments, at least in the short term. I think, so yes, it is clear that additional guidance is pending and will be needed before any final determinations are made regarding how we might count fourth quarter, what we might do with final grades. I do think it's important to point out that even with our current plans in the short term for third quarter, the fact that we've decided to take the pass incomplete approach because quality points and GPA aren't determined by quarter grades, I think it's important for folks to know and understand that no GPA for, you know, a grade nine through 11th grader has been determined or impacted yet. And again, all of that will be kind of played out and determined by what we find out and what direction is provided by the state. And, you know, again, we, I don't think that we can say explicitly that the state will go in one direction or the other, and it may be a situation where there is some level of latitude that districts provide, although I think we would prefer, just from a fairness standpoint, for all students across the 115 LEAs to be kind of graded and evaluated with the same methodology, certainly at the high school level, where you've got things like quality points and GPAs. But again, that is yet to be determined at this point.
Thank you, I appreciate that. In the interest of time, I'll condense everything else, and I'll just say that I would like to give you the feedback that I am getting from parents that I'm hearing and from students, that there is interest in having the option of a grade versus the pass fail, so long as the guidance says that a student's grade can't be negatively impacted. You know, the thought is that, could there be some option for that? Additional interest I get back from parents and from students is whether or not they would have the option for additional coursework in the summer if public gathering restrictions are lifted, and even potentially the chance to complete quarter three work, or at least do something such that they can be evaluated on the quarter three work that they have received. The last thing that I do want to provide in terms of feedback is that, I thought you did a very good job of explaining those criteria, the criteria that the state has laid out for us. And I think that's important, because sometimes people just hear, "Oh, we can't do it because of equity." And, you know, that's a term that can mean 100 different things to 100 different people. And I think the more that we can explain what those challenges are and what they actually look like and put a face to that, I think the more effective will be in our communication about why we make the decisions that we make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. This is Cash.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So, to the same question to Mr. Cook, and I think maybe to Superintendent Moore, the fact that I think a lot of the questions that we're getting, we don't, we really can't answer until the State Board of Education or DPI come up with some of their answers, do we have any understanding of when that would be and maybe what is holding that part up?
So that, I mean, the context, this is Kathy Moore. I know that there is still a hope that we will be able to return to school prior to the end of the year, and that is one of the main factors in not messaging finality to what's going to happen with those grades.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, just, it's a good answer, and it's very understandable, so I just want to be sure I had the right answer. My second question just is, well, I want to say, besides the fact that the curriculum has been really, really well rolled out, I feel, and having had grandkids involved in it, I'm hearing really good things, so I want to say thank you for that, as well as the technology, I think, has been a huge, huge part of what has worked really well, and I know it's going out. I have a question there. If a child or a family, my assumption is, and I think I've been told, if a child or a family has not heard about a device, or possibly has received an email in English but speaks only Spanish, would they, would we send them back to their school for their distribution, or if they have a question, it would go back to their school, like an elementary school or such?
Ms. Cash, this is Marlo Gaddis. I'll answer that one. So the initial reach to families was done by teachers in the school, and principals and counselors. If for some reason they were unable to reach a family, we then sent a school messenger, which does, is also translated in Spanish, so it did go out to all families. We actually ended up getting a very large number of folks the second round. But at this point in time, if there is somebody English, somebody who speaks English, or someone who speaks another language, who has not been able to get a device at this point in time, the best thing they can do right now is to reach out to their school, and they will add them to the numbers, and then we will work on getting them the device.
Okay, that's great. That's helpful. And again, thank you for the technology piece, and I haven't got a question for Mr. Co., but thank you so much as well. It's been, it's been amazing what you and Paula DeLuca have done in that area. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Cash. Ms. Kushner.
Thank you. And Marlo Gaddis, I had a quick question on technology, the student tech help desk. I recognize that we have 24/7 access to submit a question, but can we think through, given the flexible time that Dr. McFarland highlighted in his presentation with how students are accessing learning, they may have to be taking turns with devices with their siblings, can we extend some of that help desk time beyond 5:00 p.m.? Is that possible, to have more flexible time in the evenings for students to access help?
That's a great question, Ms. Kushner. I will say, as this is new for us, and because we have a limited help desk staff initially, they are still working with our staff. Right now, we have a volunteer student help desk, made up of our media coordinators, our technology contacts, and other members of our technology services division. We're going to start with those hours, but fully expect that we're going to need to extend those at this point in time. You're welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We will be, we will have to constantly shift. That has been the name of the game, and so as we find the need, we keep trying to shift to make sure we're meeting it. So that is definitely a possibility.
Thank you, Ms. Kushner. Ms. Mahaffey.
Thank you, Chair Sutton. My question is, again, for Mr. Cook regarding grading. In the guidance from DPI, it lists critical factors that need to be met in order for grades to be given to students. How are we tracking, and when, how will Wake County determine when those critical factors are being met? And while we're waiting for additional guidance, are we asking teachers to maintain grades during that time? Should we convert to graded assignments?
Yes, ma'am. So I'll respond to the second question first, if that's okay. Essentially, for third quarter, we are asking that teachers maintain the numeric average for students. So while being a pass or an incomplete is being used as a placeholder, it has not been reported in PowerSchool, and it's the reason that we have not distributed report cards and will not for the foreseeable future, report cards for third quarter. But we are asking that teachers maintain that numeric average as of March the 13th, and we ask that that information is readily available to students who may want to continue, even though, even in cases where they're above the passing mark. I think, you know, we've spelled out clearly, based on State Board guidance, that if students aren't over that passing mark for third quarter, they can continue to do work. That also applies to students who maybe have an 89 for third quarter as of March the 13th and want to move their numeric average up above the 90 mark, which, of course, would be, you know, a change in a letter grade potentially if, in the event, we went back to some type of a traditional grading system after March, or excuse me, after May the 15th. So I do think it's important to point out, we are asking that those averages be maintained for third quarter. For fourth quarter, at least through May the 15th, we're not necessarily asking that teachers maintain a quantifiable measure of what a grade quote-unquote would typically be, just given the wide variance right now that we know that we have with accessibility, with learning needs of students. I think realistically, the intent, again, is to focus on providing valuable feedback. Certainly, you know, even with my own daughter engaging in remote learning in the past couple of days, you know, she's being told what she's missed or what she's gotten incorrect, and so the feedback in that regard is valuable from a learning standpoint. But what we're not necessarily doing for fourth quarter, at least through the 15th, is asking the teacher somehow quantify numerically what a grade might end up being. And again, we'll make adjustments as needed after May the 15th, based on any additional guidance from the board at the state level. But again, just because there's so many complexities and challenges that students are facing, especially in these first few weeks with this next phase of remote learning, it's just probably nearly impossible to try to quantify feedback and have it done in a way that's consistent and equitable across the board, particularly with so many students that we know that are out there, that are having difficulty and challenges with engagement. And Ms. Mahaffey, you'll have to forgive me, I forgot the first part of your question.
Yeah, so the first part of my question is, how are we determining when the critical factors, as given by DPI, are being met? Are we monitoring that?
Yeah, it may have been a previous question that someone asked in Dr. McFarland's segment of the presentation. We are monitoring data, and I think our Counseling Student Services Department this week is soliciting hard data from schools on the numbers and the names of students and families where engagement and connection and communication has not yet occurred. And we know, obviously, right now, as is the case across the state and nationally, there are ongoing challenges with connecting with students in a remote learning environment in any time period, but particularly in the difficult circumstances that so many of our, so much of our community is experiencing right now. So I don't know that I could, I could give a concrete answer to that, other than to say, we are and will be continuing to monitor what those numbers look like when it comes to see, to seeing how many students are able to engage and do have access. And again, even in the best of circumstances, we know that there's going to be variations in access, even when a device is present, and even when a hotspot is present. I think there's so many other factors that are in play in this type of environment that have to be considered when we're talking about evaluating and grading students. And so I think that's probably, at this point, the best response that can be provided.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mahaffey. Ms. Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll try to be really quick with these questions. My first question is from Mr. Cook. We are hearing, of course, as everyone knows, from, you know, college-bound students who have quite a bit of anxiety about how this will impact college admissions, not, you know, if they're not having access to a GPA, or not having the ability to boost their grade. I've just been doing my own research and have found that many universities appear to be changing their admissions processes, but I was wondering what kind of feedback are student services who are in regular contact with universities, what kind of feedback you are getting from them, and whether or not that's something you'd plan on sharing with families to sort of ease their concerns?
Yes, ma'am. That's a great and an important question, and one that we have gotten. And, you know, I think first and foremost, for families and students that have those concerns and aspirations, it is important for us to be reminded that this is a global issue. And not only is it impacting students in North Carolina or the United States, it's impacting students across the globe. And as such, it's impacting college admissions processes, scholarship applications, and parameters across the globe. And so this is not a case, for example, where, you know, in eastern North Carolina County that might miss a month or two of school, and it's an isolated, small-scale issue that could conceivably put those students at a disadvantage, even within their own state. This is a situation where, you know, quite frankly, across the entire country, and probably globally as well, in many places, colleges and universities will know that there is always and forever going to be some level of an asterisk next to the spring semester of the 2019-20 school year on any student's transcript at any level, secondary or post-secondary. And so I do think it's important for all of us to remember the massive context of this. And our colleges and universities are already adapting, as you alluded to, Ms. Scott. The UNC system has already made some adjustments to their admissions requirements for incoming freshmen for the upcoming fall 2021 school year. So I think that context is important to know and remember. And all that said, we know that concerns about GPA and quality points and college transcripts, and how all that's going to play out, and what grading system the state or the district may end up landing on, and how that's going to impact all of those things, that only adds to the level of anxiety and stress of our students and families, and I think we recognize and we acknowledge that. And so as such, we will continue to work as hard as we can to arrive at whatever solutions are possible and feasible that recognizes the hard work that's occurring. And, you know, we're referencing college-bound students now, but obviously students who, you know, may be career-bound or heading to the military or not sure yet, whether they're in an AP course, an honors-level course, or otherwise, all of that matters to our students in varying ways. And so we fully recognize and, you know, will work really hard to address those issues moving forward to the degree that we can.
Thank you, Mr. Cook, and I certainly appreciate all of that feedback. And then the last question I had, I'm not sure who would be best equipped to answer this, but I appreciate that we are able to work with Activate Good. I know we had a large number of volunteers, people willing to volunteer, and they submitted, I think via Google document, directly to WCPSS. And I was wondering if those people have received any kind of feedback at this point from, any kind of communication, rather, or if this is a different group of people? I just wondered how that volunteer organization has been going.
Ms. Scott, I'll answer that. That's what Marlo Gaddis. I'm not sure of the communication that's gone out to them at this point in time. I am aware that we did fill out every slot. I got that information right before the board meeting, but I will check with Activate Good to see what has been sent at this point in time.
Thank you. Mr. Fletcher, did you have a question?
I did not. That's a hangover from a previous presentation.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Just wanted to check. So at this point, we're a little bit behind. I will go ahead and adjourn our work session before doing so. I just want to remind all participants that you will need to end this meeting and click on the separate link for the 5:30 meeting, four meeting. The general public can find that link on our website, wcpss.net, just like in our physical meetings. I expected it to take us a few minutes to switch over and adjourn from this meeting to the next. So I'll look to start that meeting in 10 minutes at 6 o'clock. So at this point, we'll adjourn, and again, ask everyone to disconnect and click onto the 5:30 link to start that meeting in approximately 10 minutes. Thank you so much, and we stand adjourned.
Thank you.